Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, staff and commissioners, fellow commissioners. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission today, Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025. Call this order. And I would like to call on Commissioner Chowhan to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Face the flag, put your hand over your heart, and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Next on our agenda is roll call and Sabrina.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. I will now begin roll call. Please indicate your presence with either a here or present. Commissioner Au. Commissioner Chowhan. Commissioner Javari.
Yes.
Commissioner Surti.
Here.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Here.
All commissioners noted, present for the record.
Next on our agenda is Agenda Number Four. Due to the vacancy of our chair, we will have a reorganization for the commission, and I would leave that agenda to our staff. Ms. Chan, Ms. Chan?
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. At this time, I'd like to declare the position of Chair vacant and call for nominations from the commission for the position of Chair.
I nominate Vice Chair Armin Reyes to become Chair.
Seconded.
So Commissioner, Vice Chair Reyes has been nominated by Commissioner Surti and seconded by Commissioner Chowhan. Are there any other nominations?
Yes.
Okay.
I respect Reyes and he's my friend. However, I think of the five of us, Commissioner DJ Javari has served on the commission for the longest of time, and he's the most experienced. And I understand he has served as Chair of this commission before. So I would be happy to support Vice Chair Armin Reyes to be our Chair next year. But today, I humbly nominate Mr. Commissioner Javari to be our next Chair of the commission. Thank you.
Any seconds? With no seconds, hearing no seconds, that nomination fails. And so we will now... Are there any other nominations? Okay, so at this point, seeing no further nominations, Commissioner Reyes has been nominated by, I mean, Vice Chair Reyes, my apologies, has been nominated by Commissioner Surti and Commissioner Chowhan, and I will now activate the electronic voting. The nomination passes with a vote of 4-0 with one abstention. It is my pleasure to announce the new Chair, Chair Reyes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So at this time, I will now, I now declare the position of the Vice Chair vacant, and we'll call for nominations for the position of Vice Chair.
I would nominate Commissioner Javari for Vice Chair. I second.
So Commissioner Javari has been nominated by Commissioner Chowhan and seconded by Commissioner Au. Are there any other further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Surti for Vice Chair. Yes.
Okay, so there's a Commissioner, Chair Reyes has now nominated Commissioner Surti for the position of Vice Chair. Any seconds? Hearing, seeing none, the nomination for Vice, for Commissioner Surti for Vice Chair has failed. So we will now, Commissioner, so now we will vote on our first, which would be Commissioner Javari has been nominated by Commissioner Chowhan and seconded by Commissioner Au. I will now activate the electronic voting. The nomination passes with a vote of 5-0. It is now my pleasure to announce the new Vice Chair, Vice Chair Javari. Congratulations. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to call for a quick five-minute recess so that we can reorganize, if that is okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're back from recess, and again, congratulations to DJ Javari for being the new Vice Chair. Now, next on our agenda is Agenda Number Five, Public Comments. This section is reserved for public comments on consent calendar and items not listed on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Verbal comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, subject to the Chair extending to a maximum of five minutes per speaker. With the total time allotted not to exceed 45 minutes unless the Chair extends. Do we have any speaker for just item number five? Any public comments? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period. Next on our agenda is Agenda Item Number Six, Six Alpha, Six A, Approval of Meeting Minutes. I would like to give this to our staff, Ms. Chan, to run over our previous minutes.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item Six A this evening is consideration of the meeting minutes from the Wednesday, June 4th Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Prior to consideration by the Planning Commission tonight, I would like to note one modification to the June 4th meetings. On Section 8B, which is on page five of the minutes, it has been amended to reflect that a report was also given by Commissioner, now Vice Chair, Javari, and that revision has been noted in the final minutes for consideration. At this time, I would like to turn it back over to the Planning Commission for further discussion and comments.
Do I have any discussion or question regarding the minutes? Commissioner Chowhan?
I'd like to modify the minutes slightly as it relates to Section 7C. And in particular, it would be the last three lines. Ms. Chan explained that Commissioner Chowhan's request to establish a new single-family residential zone, RS 4000, would be categorized as a special project request, which would need the approval of City Council. And as such, all I would like to do is to add after City Council and has substantial cost associated with the sequester that is needed, because that better explains why we chose not to go forward with it.
Having heard the comment and amendment, do I have a motion for the change in the minutes? I need a motion and a second.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Au.
Yeah, with Commissioner Chowhan's comments, do we need to have a consensus or vote to make that change?
Thank you, Commissioner Al. So it would be appropriate for the maker of the motion to perhaps motion to accept the amendment provided by Commissioner Chowhan, and that would be the motion to approve the minutes, including Commissioner Chowhan's modifications.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to make the changes that Commissioner Chowhan has mentioned and to correct item 8B to include Commissioner Javari's name in the comments. Under those, oh, okay, sorry. So do we have a second?
Do I have a second?
I second.
Having moved and seconded, the amendment for the minutes for...
So I will now activate the electronic voting. That's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, moving on. Now we are on Agenda Item Number Seven A, Just as the Precise Plan 2025-6. Review and consideration to waive full reading, often adopt a resolution of the Cerritos Planning Commission approving Precise Plan 2025-6, a proposal by the residential property owner to construct a first and second-floor addition to an existing one-story residence at 19525 Cheryl Avenue, Cerritos, California 90703. Subject property zone, single-family resident, residential RS 5000, APN 7050-015-028. Now we will have a staff, I think it's Mr. Anthony who will do the presentation?
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Yes, item seven A this evening is Precise Plan 2025-6, as you had mentioned, a residential proposal at 19525 Cheryl Avenue. This item will be presented by Associate Planner, Matray Anthony, after which he and current Planning Manager, Amanda Acuna, will be available to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. Good evening, Chair and members of the Cerritos Planning Commission. Property owners of 19525 Cheryl Avenue are requesting approval of Precise Plan 2025-6 to construct a 574-square-foot first-floor addition and a new 686-square-foot second-floor to an existing single-family residence. For details of the proposal, I would like to direct your attention to the screen for a presentation. This is an aerial view of the subject property, which is zone's single-family residence, RS 5000. It's generally located east of Gritley Road and south of 195th Street. This is an large aerial view that shows the details of the property. The property is bordered to the north, south, and west by single-family residents on property zoned RS 5000. To the east is Cheryl Avenue, a 60-foot-wide residential street across which are single-family homes on properties zoned RS 5000. This is a view of the front elevation of the existing single-family residence. Subject property currently contains conditions that do not comply with the Cerritos Municipal Code or the city's standards for residential properties. Here you can see the landscaping in the parkway area adjacent to the south of the driveway apron has been removed and replaced with bricks. Project-specific conditions of approval 43 has been added to require the applicant to remove these bricks in the parkway and restore this area with organic plant material. This is a view of the rear yard looking north at an unpermitted addition. This structure will be demolished as part of the proposed project. This is the proposed site plan, showing the footprint of the home. The applicants, as once previously stated, the applicants are proposing to construct a 574-square-foot first-floor addition, the front and rear of the existing residence, and to add a 686-square-foot second floor to the existing single-story residence. As proposed, the project will meet all setback and lock coverage requirements. This is the proposed first-floor plan. When completed, the first floor will include a living room, a dining room, a kitchen, a family room, a bedroom with a bath, two additional bedrooms, an additional powder room, and a laundry room. In addition, the first floor will include a 95-square-foot front porch. This is the proposed second floor. When completed, the second floor will include a new master bedroom suite with a bathroom and a 106-square-foot balcony facing Cheryl Avenue. This is the adjacent neighbor plan. Shown on the plan, there are no direct alignment of second-story windows with adjacent property to the north, south, or west. Also, the proposed second-story balcony has been designed to face away from adjacent properties and will be located at the front of the subject property overlooking the front yard and Cheryl Avenue. Due to its location and design, potential privacy impact on neighboring residents will be minimized. Therefore, any possibility of privacy issues arising from the window placement have been mitigated through this project's design. This is the proposed front elevation. The residence will be finished with a white-colored stucco and reddish-brown trim. As proposed, the front elevation will feature a stone veneer, which will wrap around the side elevations along the areas that are publicly visible. This is the rear elevation. The roof of the residence will be covered with a composite Spanish tuscany-colored tile. This is the north side elevation. All windows and doors will be detailed with a minimum four-inch-wide bronze-colored trim. This is the south side elevation, which features the same architectural enhancements found on the other elevations. The architect has prepared a color palette and materials board, which is provided for you at the dais. All exterior colors and materials will be subject to the approval of the Department of Community Development to ensure these elements complement the entire housing and surround the community. This concludes the PowerPoint presentation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Precise Plan 2025-6, subject to all the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. This project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act review. To date, staff has not received any comments as a result of the public hearing notice. At this time, staff is available to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Do we have, do we have any comment from the public? Because I would like to open public comment period for this Agenda Item Seven A, Precise Plan 2025-6. Seeing none, I will move to close the public comment period for Precise Plan 2025-6. For our commissioners, do we have any questions or discussion regarding the precise plan? Mr. Chowhan?
All right, in reading this plan, on page four, we say all windows and doors will be detailed with a minimum four-inch trim. However, when I'm looking at a standard set of conditions, which one is it? Oh, yes, Condition 27 on page 37. We seem to have a very generic language here, which says window treatments including but not limited to border trim measuring six inches in width and construction. So I have two questions. Which one is it? Is it four-inch or six-inch? And the other question is, what's the limitation here? Why wood and raised stucco only? Why not resin-based board? Because having worked with wood, wood rots over time. So is this a standard language? I'm just trying to get clarification or understanding of our Condition 27. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Yes, I can answer your questions in regards to the standard condition of approval. As stated, it is general, and that's intended to be applicable to a broad nature of development projects that are brought before the commission. While it does state that that all may be applicable to every project, staff has reviewed the project plans in accordance with the city's residential design requirements, and it does call for at least a minimum width of four-inch. And so to answer your question, the project plans that are brought before the commission tonight do reflect that, a minimum of four-inch trim of wood, yes, among each of the windows. To your second question, as well, in the design manual for the city, it does call for some type of trim material to include either wood, stucco, or other acceptable materials. So it is to the applicant to what they would like to propose, and they are proposing wood. I will only just add that, as it relates to the windows, the seal does have vinyl to protect from weathering as well.
And the only reason I ask that is because when I see something, then I put it into context of the community that you see. And I've seen trims that were six inches wide or wider. I've also seen a very old 60s house where we've pretty much used four-by-five beams to surround the windows as well. So just trying to understand where this language is coming from. Page 14, it seems to indicate, this is a diagram of the floor plan, it says the rear yard has grass. It's not a requirement that they must have live material, correct? They don't have to have grass?
In the rear yard setback, that is correct. There's not a city requirement to have a minimum percentage of grass or other organic material.
Okay, and one last question, Chair Reyes.
Go ahead.
It's on page 39, and it just caught my attention, which is Condition 30C. And this is for any block wall facing, which, by the way, doesn't apply to this property. "To avoid problems creating graffiti, the property owner slash developer shall apply two coats of anti-graffiti coating of the type and manufacturer which shall be subject to the approval of the Department of Public Works and Department of Development." So my question is, if there is graffiti on the outside of the wall, who's responsible for cleaning it?
Yes, thank you. I can answer that question as well. And I, we also have Assistant City Engineer, sorry, Assistant City Engineer Jared Lee here, who can speak in regards to the Public Works Department's role in handling cases as it relates to graffiti along potential public right-of-ways. But as the condition does state, it is the requirement to provide those two coats for anti-graffiti coating for the, for the properties, for the owners, for the property owners of those subject properties to provide that. If it is within private property, it is to the responsibility of the property owners or commercial or industrial owners. But as it relates to things along the public right-of-way, I will relate to Assistant City Engineer. But as it relates to things along the public right-of-way, I will relate to Assistant City Engineer Jared.
Yeah, as Amanda said, private property is the responsibility of the homeowner. I looked into that. It's unfortunate. That's the way it's written in the municipal code. But there is also a clause in there that says, "Up to the Director of Public Works." If something stands out that doesn't look good in the city, he has the power to say, he'll call our maintenance group and they can take care of that.
So if there's graffiti or tagging that's done to a property, they can call the city? Or should the owner just take it upon themselves to repaint it?
No, they shouldn't repaint it themselves. They should call the city, let us know, and we'll look into it. And we'll typically reach out to our maintenance people to help out. But there has been issues when that happens. Usually, since it's private property and we want to respect private property, we usually have the homeowner pretty much sign off on it to let us, allow us to go in and paint on top of it.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you. No other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Any other question? Mr. Al?
Yeah, I have a question. It seems that this project, when it's completed, would be the only two-story building in that neighborhood. Do the neighbors need to be notified about this project?
So yes, this is a public hearing matter at tonight's meeting. So member, property owners within a five-hundred-foot radius of the site were notified of tonight's meeting and of the project information. As it relates to the neighborhood, within the zoning regulations as well, they are permitted to have a two-story home, such as this one, as long as they meet city's minimum standards. But tonight's item is a public hearing, and members of the neighborhood and the residential tract were notified.
So it will be after this meeting? After today's meeting, the public notification?
No. Property owners within a five-hundred-foot radius were notified of this meeting at least ten days prior to tonight.
They are already notified?
They've been notified at least ten, and notices were also posted at various locations within the city to notify that this property is being proposed for this addition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Do I see anybody else? Commissioner Surti?
Yeah, I just want to make a public comment. I think it's good that when people are, especially in Cerritos, residents are remodeling their homes, I think it creates value, it creates pride in our city. I think it's also a good way to, you know, to encourage other residents to remodel their homes. Okay, and I, I think I spoke to Kristen Aguilar, who is Chief Staff. I mean, she's in charge of the, of this committee. And she said that, I think there's about twenty applications that they get on a daily basis, right? Like of different, different projects, right? So it's a good sign that our city is, people are trying to remodel their homes. I think it shows activity. I think that it shows that this Cerritos, Cerritos is a very viable city. And anytime, any type of projects are happening, all it does is it makes the city better. Okay, and I think, I personally, and I'm sure everyone in this committee, encourages people to remodel their homes and continue to, you know, and, you know, and our goal is to make people, make it easy for people to get remodel their homes and remodel their businesses and make it easy for them. And make it a very friendly, business-friendly and home-friendly environment. That's what I want to add.
Thank you, Commissioner Surti. Any other discussion, comments, question? No. Okay, commissioners, thank you for your questions, suggestions, and comments. We really, really make this hearing really powerful and really informative to everyone. So seeing no more questions or discussion, I would like to call for a motion for approving Precise Plan twenty-two-five-six. So I need a motion.
I, I motion that to say yes.
Motion from Commissioner Surti, seconded by?
The pass. I second.
By Vice Chair Javari.
All right, so a motion was made by Commissioner Surti and seconded by Vice Chair Javari to adopt a resolution approving Precise Plan twenty-two-five-six. I will now activate the electronic voting. Motion carries by a vote of five oh.
Congratulations to the applicant. Okay, we now move to Agenda Item number seven B, Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-nine-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five Amendment. It's to review and consideration to waive full reading and adopt a resolution of the Cerritos Planning Commission recommending approval of Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five Amendment. Ms. Chan?
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item seven B this evening, as Chair Reyes mentioned, is Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five Amendment, a proposal by the property owner to construct in addition to an existing warehouse building at one-four-one-one-three-one-eighty-third Street. This item will be presented by Senior Planner Jeremy Lowe, after which him and current Planning Manager Amanda Cunha will be available to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. Good evening, Chair and Cerritos Planning Commissioners. Property Owner LH Investments LLC is requesting approval of Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five Amendment to construct a nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-four-square-foot addition to an existing warehouse building located at one-four-one-one-three-one-eighty-third Street. This is an aerial view of the subject property. The subject property is a two-point-two-three-acre parcel, which is zoned industrial, or M, and has the emergency shelter overlay, M-one. And it was originally developed in nineteen-seventy-two. It is generally located west of Valley View Avenue, north of one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street, and east of the Coyote Creek River Channel. The subject property is bordered by industrial properties zoned M to the north, to the west, to the east, and then to the south across one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street is an industrial property in the city of La Palma. Currently, the property contains a warehouse building measuring approximately forty thousand square feet in floor area. The building is currently used for warehouse purposes and features a small office area. This photo shows the existing conditions of the subject property. This is a view looking northeast at the existing warehouse building and showing the loading docks and parking area. Here, we have a view to the east of the warehouse building. The approximately forty thousand square foot building was originally approved under Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine and was designed with a planned ten thousand square foot addition and new parking lot as part of a second phase of construction, which never occurred. The planned addition and parking lot would have been located in the large landscape area shown here, which is covered in just lawn and mature pine trees. Here, we have a view looking east along one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street. You can see there's a generous thirty-foot, thirty-four-foot-wide landscaped parkway area with a meandering sidewalk and several mature pine trees. The existing enhanced material, which is exposed aggregate siding, can be seen here and will be used on the new addition. The applicant is requesting approval of an amendment to Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine, a proposal to construct a nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-four-square-foot addition to the east side of the existing warehouse building where the existing landscape lawn exists. Other site improvements include the construction of an additional parking area in front of the new addition, new landscape planters within the existing parking lot to the west of the existing building, parking lot restriping, new landscaping, and a new trash enclosure. This is the proposed site plan showing the proposed improvements on the eastern side of the existing building, shown in red. And shown in blue is the new parking area and new driveway. In addition to the new parking area on the east, the west side will be reconfigured and restriped in combination with new landscape planters and the new trash enclosure. This is the proposed roof plan. The roof design features new and existing roof-mounted mechanical units, which will be fully screened from view from surrounding properties to meet Cerritos Municipal Code screening requirements. Proposed roof screens will feature light-colored stucco to match the repainted building. These are proposed building elevations. At the top of the slide is the north elevation, showing the rear of the building with the addition on the left-hand side. At the bottom of the slide is the south elevation, or the front of the building, which fronts one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street with the addition on the right. Note the new entrance. The existing building features a combination of stucco and exposed aggregate tilt-up walls, which will remain. The proposed exterior improvements will refresh the building with white-colored stucco and gray-colored stucco trims detailed with horizontal and vertical score lines. The addition will match the existing building and includes the use of exposed aggregate panels. The existing entrance and new entrance will feature a modern black aluminum awning. At the top of the slide is the east elevation, showing the proposed addition area. At the bottom of the slide is the west elevation, which will be unchanged, except for some new paint. The applicant has hired a California licensed landscape architect who has prepared a conceptual landscape plan for the subject property. The proposed landscape design features new dense landscaping along the one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street frontage, using a variety of plants and shrubs at varying heights and colors. New plant materials will include pigeon-point coyote brush, winter glow emerald carpet, pale leaf yuccas, Pacific coast irises, and Apache rose switch gas, grass, providing more textured landscape materials at the subject property, where there is currently just lawn. In addition, new landscape planters will be installed within the parking areas, which will feature desert oak trees and a mix of plant materials. Mature pine trees that currently surround the subject property will be retained to provide variation in tree species and to screen the subject property from adjacent uses. However, some of the mature pine trees will be removed for construction of the new addition and the new parking lot. Upon completion, the total amount of landscaping on the site will be fifteen thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen square feet, or twenty-six point five percent of the unbuilt area, which exceeds the minimum Cerritos Municipal Code landscape requirements of fifteen percent of the unbuilt area. This concludes details of the proposed project. Before you this evening is consideration of a Precise Plan amendment for an addition to the existing warehouse building on the subject property and other related site improvements. Additionally, I'd like to note that this project has been evaluated in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, guidelines, and has been determined to be categorically exempt. A notice of a public hearing regarding this item was mailed to owners of property within five hundred feet of the subject property on June twentieth, twenty-two-five, which is at least ten days prior to the public hearing this evening, as required by the Cerritos Municipal Code. Notices were also posted at the city's four designated posting boards on June twentieth, twenty-two-five. In addition, the staff report and all exhibits were posted on the city's website. At this time, it is recommended that the planning commission review and discuss the information provided, conduct a public hearing, and adopt a resolution recommending approval of the Precise Plan Amendment nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five by the city council. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff will be happy to answer any questions at this time. The project applicant and their engineer are also available to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. I would like to open the public comment period for this item, Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five Amendment. Do I have any comment from the public? Seeing none, I now close the public comment period. I would like to open comments, discussion, questions to the commissioners regarding this, regarding this plan.
My question is, what's, what's currently there now? What kind of, what kind of business is it?
Yes, so it's staff's understanding that the warehouse is storing sunglasses.
And will the new addition include a, like a sublease? Or is this all for one tenant?
Generally speaking, we, we do not allow subleases. However, there's been no indication that it's for another tenant as well.
And, and just to clarify, that new, that new addition is on the grass area?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good.
Thank you, Commissioner Surti. Commissioner Chowhan?
More of a comment rather than any, I like the plan. I like to see people invest in the city. So with so many businesses leaving California, especially warehouses, it's nice to see an investment in the city, especially in the warehouse industry. So I commend whoever for investing in our city. We know that you have many options, and staying in Cerritos is one of them, and I thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Commissioner Al?
Yeah, I just have a question for clarification. On page two of the agenda report, in the middle, it says the subject property contains fifty-three parking spaces. Then on page four, it says that the, the new project, the, the, the new project would provide a total of forty-three spaces. Did I read it correctly? Is there a reduction of ten parking spaces for this property? And if so, what is the reason?
Yes, that is correct. So parking requirements for commercial and residential properties, but particular commercial properties are based on square footage of the use. So certain uses require a different number of parking spaces per square foot of floor area. As originally constructed and proposed, the forty thousand and six-square-foot warehouse building only required less than, you know, forty-three parking spaces. With the addition, the new requirement is forty-three parking spaces. So previously, the site was, I guess, overparked, you could say. And with the addition and the reduction in parking spaces, they will be compliant. They require exactly forty-three spaces.
Thank you. So I assume that's enough for their business?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Any, any question, discussion, any more comment from commissioners? So I'd like now to call, get a motion for Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five Amendment. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the, to waive the full reading and adopt the Resolution twenty-nine-a, parentheses, sorry, nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five.
Second.
We have a motion and second for the consideration to waive full reading and adopt a resolution for Precise Plan nineteen-seventy-two-to-two-nine-A twenty-two-five Amendment.
Yes.
And now, Ms. Chan, would you initiate the vote?
Sure, yes, a motion was made by Commissioner Chowhan and seconded by Commissioner Al. I will now activate the electronic voting. Motion carries with a vote of five zero.
Okay, great. Again, congratulations to the applicant, and thank you again for bringing your business to Cerritos. I know a lot of warehouses are moving in the, in Latin Par, and just like Mr. Chowhan said, welcome to this, welcome to your additional business to the city. Thank you again. And that concludes our public hearing. And now, next on our agenda item will be a report, report from designated liaison. And now we bring back to the staff, Ms. Chan.
Thank you, Chair. First, congratulations to Chair Reyes and Vice Chair Javari. And we'd like to take a minute to welcome Commissioner Surti to the Planning Commission. We look, staff looks forward to working with everyone on the Planning Commission this upcoming year. And the only other item I have to report is a reminder to the public that the next Planning Commission will be held on Wednesday, August sixth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven o'clock P.M.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chan. Next on our agenda item is reports from the commission, from the commissioner. Any reports? Start from the left, Mr. Surti?
No, nothing report on my end.
Well, but anyway, welcome.
Well, thank you, oh yeah. I'm very, very honored to be serving, and thank you for, you know, thank you for the opportunity to do this. And I love the fact that we have a really good team here, a good, good group. And I'm, there's a lot of experience and there's a lot of, just, you know, the, the goal is to, you know, always work together and make, make this a better place, make Cerritos a better city, a stronger city. And, and, and also, like, just the fact that we're all together, I think that makes me really happy.
Thank you, and again, welcome. Mr. Chowhan?
Just a couple of items to report on, just from my perspective, which is, I thank the city for passing the budget. I know it's a consensus item, but it's important that the budget be passed and that we work towards a common goal. Second, the State of the City address, which clearly lays out the goals. So if anybody doesn't have it, maybe you want to look at the eight-point plan that was presented by our mayor Frankie Yokayama. And so this gives us a sense of direction. And also, congrats, Mr. Reyes Surti, for coming on board. The only other question I have is for the staff to research. Governor Newsom just passed a new legislation about reducing the paperwork about SEQA. I have no idea how it impacts the city, may impact the city. I'm not asking you to rush on it by any means, but give us an impact of what he intends to do with this new legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Commissioner Al?
Not much to report. First, I would like to welcome Commissioner Surti to be, to join the commission. And when I first met him on his campaign trail, he was walking the precinct and we chatted. And now we're working together as colleagues on the commission. Welcome again. And second, I would like to congratulate our new chair, Mr. Reyes, and our vice chair, Mr. Javari, for your new roles on this commission. And I'm sure under your leadership, we're going to do a good job for the rest of the year.
Vice Chair Javari?
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, Commissioner Surti, welcome aboard. Congratulations. Also, congratulations, Commissioner Reyes, especially wearing two hats in one year. Firstly, the vice chair and then the chair in the very first year. So congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
And to all the residents of Cerritos, a very, very happy 4th of July. And stay safe, stay happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Javari. And also, congratulations on your vice chair. And I told you earlier in private, I will lean on you for advice and leadership since you've been here as one of our more senior commissioners, and I know I can use your help. And again, welcome, Mr. Surti. And hold on one second. Before I continue, I would like to recognize the presence of our, two of our City Council members tonight. That is Councilmember Polito and Councilmember Hong. Thank you, council members, for joining us tonight. And I know you're here because you want to see some breathing in action. Okay, Mr. Fred?
Yeah, I just want to add, when I was campaigning, I met a lot of the residents and there was a lot of concerns about the way the city is in terms of, you know, the infrastructure. And so, you know, if there's anything that we can do on the Planning Committee, just reach out to us. Don't be afraid. Reach out to your city councilor as well. And, you know, our goal as commissioners, as, you know, anybody that works in the city is to make the lives of the residents better. So don't feel shy about reaching out to us, okay? And contacting the city staff, contacting city councilors. Our goal is to address the issue and be very responsive and really make Cerritos a much better, safer place, whether it be with safety, whether it be with infrastructure, whether it be with the parks. So the goal is to make this a better place. And then don't feel shy about reaching out to us by email, by phone, by social media if you have to. So I just want to let people know about that.
Thank you. Now it's my turn to give a report. I think before I do a report, I would like to, I'll do it anyway. I think congratulations to the Papa family. I heard that they have a new addition to their family. So their first, is it their first? So congratulations to Alvin and the wife. Like Mr. Chowhan, I also attended the State of the City address by our mayor. Excellent presentation. I wish everybody could have seen there, but a lot of people from all neighboring cities, neighboring communities, and dignitaries were present. They know what Cerritos is all about, but now they know our strategic plan. They know our eight initiatives, though, that's from, you know, street cleaning to the water system and to the services, safety, and it makes you feel really proud of being the city, you know, living in the city. And that was my, the official event that I attend. But I also would like to make a report as a citizen, as a resident of Cerritos. Because as a retiree, I'm now out of time to participate and to be a patron and look into the services of the city. I mean, I'm watering my lawn and doing stuff. I would like to really, kudos to the Southwest Patrol. That's, I think that's a private security agency that we hire to patrol in addition to the Sheriff's Department. And I see, you know, Officer Ray, one of the guy that patrol our neighborhood. I see him in the morning, in the afternoon. So you guys, I know you guys are at work, and most of you are at work, but just let it be known that people, we have extra services, extra set of eyes and ears patrolling our community day and night. So as a resident, that really makes me feel safer. So again, thank you to Officer Ray who patrols that area. Also, as a resident, I also became a patron of the services being here. So I play a couple times at the Ironwood Nine, and it's great. And everybody I play with, they say how wonderful the city is, the, it's great. It can use some improvement, but it's really wonderful. And I would like to commend also the staff, Mike, who runs the place there. You know, from the staff to the facility, it's, they're doing a tremendous job. And also our city sports complex. My nieces and nephew plays a softball league there every Tuesday and I, it's, you know, the bathroom are well-stocked, clean, and everything is well. And I know Ben, I think, is in charge of that facility. Again, kudos to all our staff or all the services. And it's really great to live in this community and see it as a patron and as a resident. So that's my, that concludes my report as a resident and as commissioner. Do I have any additional questions? And also, we have a great event coming up. And this is in recognition of the Let Freedom Ring Committee, because the yearly Let Freedom Ring celebration is happening this 4th of July. So if you haven't seen the flyer, you know, it's been, it's all over the town. You see the flags all over the place. And activities start from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. There will be rides, attraction, game booths, and food trucks. And the stage entertainment starts from 6:30 PM, formal ceremony and national bell ringing. And at 7:45, there will be a band, a tease band. And for whatever, what everybody is waiting for, the fireworks. Fireworks starts at 9:00 PM. So for the rides and the attraction, there's a pre-sale wristband and everything is in this flyer. So we're inviting everybody to join us. It's 4th of July. And if you can't, and if you're celebrating at home, have a safe and happy 4th of July. So seeing no more questions or discussion, I hereby adjourn the Cerritos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 2, 2025. Bearing adjourn.